Okay, we will call September 2nd OSH County Commission Meeting to order. Start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
See, I can barely hear you.
Sorry.
Okay, real call. All three commissioners are present. Josh is gonna be late, right? Josh will be here. Michelle Morris is present. Additions, deletions to the agenda. What you have handwritten here, Michelle? I would like to make that an executive session. We'll call it Attorney/Client Correspondence Discussion.
Is there a talk?
Attorney/Client.
Correspondent, okay.
Uh, we'll go for, let's go, we'll start at five minutes. Thanks. Get us up speed, get Josh. Advice. Okay, and is there anything? Anything else? Okay, I will need a motion to approve the agenda with the addition.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made, second in all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, first bid. Do we have Mr. Wells's purchase form? We do not? Land development, where's this one? I guess we'll go to Michelle. Tax rolls, copy the sheet and contract. Go through your audit letter. Any corrections? Here you are.
So, on this, he said get it signed and stuff, and he will read through it and ask or answer the questions on the 15th after the period.
Okay, here you go. You're gonna do that one first. This is a...
Yeah, this is one. I, I'm gonna wait till he's, if you guys wanna sign it, you can. I'll just put no on.
Three, this is the new budget, just basically for your reference. And they said you make sure you go through them. If any questions, the levy and the vegetarian glory cannot change.
Two, one.
The vegetarian glory amount cannot change, and the no levy cannot change. If we need to tweak something within, the rest we can, but overall, the idiot cannot change.
So, are you familiar with this?
Uh, so what we looked at last time, I think, we did, yes. We, um, I forget what he said. We didn't have to have it signed or something at the time, whatever.
At the time, yeah, I was concerned about it, but...
I got a question. When I was reviewing these amendments, uh, did we ever figure anything on the Health Department for that plumbing repair?
Brett was gonna give us some more information, because I had...
I forgot to ask him about it.
Yeah, I talked to him about securing some bids, about doing the entire line. Because apparently it ties in on the opposite side of the road, so we would have to bore underneath.
Perfect.
Right, and it's all bad every minute. From what he said, they had a camera down it. We could probably grab it real quick.
Just, I, I completely forgot about it until I saw the minutes here.
Yeah.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yeah, we just needed answers. We knew you were the guy to talk to.
Oh, well, I've got two, which one are we dealing with first?
First thing was the tax. One contractor, he was supposed to be here, my person I opened this week.
Yeah.
Um, so we got into, this is, I'm trying to log, I'm wondering, cut the floor out when I got a contractor available, so they can actually see it open.
Yeah.
So then we could get more of a realist.
Make a real plan.
To fix it, because it's, I mean, right now, they can, they can come in and they can fix the connection, but it's not gonna solve the problem.
Yeah.
Because we've got sort of running the opposite direction, because the building's so much that it's pushing, it downs.
Yeah, and it's a slab building. Is there two foundations there or just one?
There's two now.
About four.
Have you been in there?
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh.
It's been mudjacked.
And that's been like that, at least four years, I've been, I mean, it's really right in the middle of the building.
Even after last mudjacking, they still couldn't get it. I mean, there's a great big crack, and caution, deep on the floors, people trip on it.
Yeah.
And that was the other thing, was to try to get somebody to never get it. But we can mudjack it again, but it's a lot harder to solve problems. So I should have, um, two bids this, or two guesses this week as far as what they think it's gonna take and the cost is gonna be to actually fix it correctly. And then there's the, also gonna get like a naming, so we just cut along the sewer, take that concrete out, reburn the pipe, and the concrete back in. Look, we can isolate that from the rest of the building or improvement. Do that, and we're gonna price to do the whole building.
Yep.
That's what I'm trying to say.
So, and there are no footings around the perimeter of that building? It's all just a slab?
Yeah, it's all just a slab. I didn't see any, um, my guess is years ago, whatever it used to be there, they tore it down, probably done a whole push wall in there, built the ground up in both building. Through the years, it just keeps kinda shifting a little more, because we're at the point now where the exterior brick walls are starting to crack out pretty good, enough for you to be able to meet your fingers in the gaps.
And we do own that, right? Because I think at one point, the county might have rented it from whoever may be built it, but I think we do own it, right?
I, if I told you, man, I, I'm not, I assume it was ours.
I think at some point, the county rented it, but I assume we own it?
I can double do some.
I had to double check, but I think we'd.
I know we just found the answer to that.
Right about now.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
It sounds to me like we need to, just like you and I talked, we need to secure a bid while those guys are in there to replace that line all the way out.
At this point, I was just a guess, but I mean, and once we get, uh, the plumber in there and run the camera.
Right.
The contractor has said, I'll look and see the highs and lows, give an idea of where all this mess is gonna be.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, thanks for the update. I was just, I was, I was curious, because I saw it on our old minutes. I was like, oh, yeah, I haven't heard anything about that.
Right now, we're, we're just trying to keep it low and flowing at the moment. That's where we're at.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Real quick, pass it down, and then we'll get Ryan up here, get him taken care of.
Send a message to come down.
Not good, eh?
It's good, it's good.
No more tears?
You gotta make sure you swallow it and don't breathe it.
Right.
I snuck in there and made some coffee in Brent's office this morning. You gotta go get your shot, it's free.
Alright, so is this the one that gentleman came in for the other day? That Mr. Payne says it's an address change or something? So this gets him off of that one parcel he doesn't own or something? Okay. Just says parcel incorrect, okay. So is that remove him? Oh, I see, this is, okay. So he's getting a refund. Did he actually pay the taxes on that? Well, this just says parcel incorrect owner's name correcting error, but then it also shows that he would be getting a refund.
If you would be so kind.
And that proved to be true. I mean, the, that everything was sold, and there's no disputing that, right?
Typically, it is a sheet that they fill out, and it's essentially an affidavit.
Right.
And then you have the praiser takes that into account.
I mean, if it, if there was an issue with that, it would, it would have been cleared up before it came to us, right?
You'd think so, yes.
On something like that, for sure.
Hi, Linda. You're, no, you're okay. Just give us a couple minutes here. We're doing a little tax roll correction.
Scribbling. Oh, hey, there's theirs, huh?
Good. Excuse me.
Need more coffee.
I don't know that I do. I'm already here. Got about four thirty.
There you go, sir.
All right. See anything? Any questions in there? Did we get them all answered?
I think you did. You did all right, you know what?
Thank you, sir. Okay, very good. Yeah, I don't think that's a refund, Heather. It says zero under the refund amount. That's the net change in tax dollars, meaning that we will not be receiving that for 2432.
From him.
From him. That's it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, I'll need a motion to approve the tax roll corrections presented by Michelle Morrison.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made, second in all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
There we go.
Now you're having chair problems.
This is the same one. Just felt like a little kid at the adults' table there for a little bit.
Okay, ladies first. Ms. Madison. We are intimidating. I'd offer you some candy, but apparently I've upset someone, because Candy Fairy hasn't showed up quite some time. I don't know who upset, but I better apologize quick. Okay, what do you got?
I, I wanted to put in for, um, raises for my three girls. For Janet, I would want to do a dollar twenty-five if I could. She has been with the county for eighteen years, from working down at the Health Department. She's excellent, she's one first deputy, and that would have been her. Mary Beth, I would want to do a dollar fifteen raise. Again, she's been excellent. All of my girls, my husband was very sick. I was not here a lot. Uh, then, after his passing, I decided to have my liver. I ended up in a hospital for three days, and I'm, well, I can feel it tied down, that's because I'm nervous.
Breathe, it'll be okay.
And, um, anyway, they've been, they've been, they've been very excellent while I've been out the office.
Yeah.
Been running. And then for Shannon, I wanted to do a dollar increase, and I wanted, oh, wait a minute, I give you Shannon's there, okay. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Uh, she didn't get her step raises. I was in here and, um, to get them, and she didn't get her step increases, like, and she's been here two and a half years. And again, I can't praise them enough for stepping in for me and handling the office. I kinda felt bad that I was missing work myself. I'm, I'm, they're very dedicated. I don't wanna lose them.
Yeah.
And...
One more there?
Yeah, it's nice when the thing can, when the ship can fly itself, you know? It's nice somebody can fly itself when you don't.
Oh, yeah, I mean, they're good girls, um, very dedicated to the office. I, I just get crazy enough. And they've been here, like I said, Shannon didn't get her increases. That might have been a little my fault, a little your responsibility.
Well, it's on the department head. It is your responsibility.
All of us.
But I will take some of it, because sometimes these things just get past us.
And that's, you've got the three employees and you, and that's, that's the total, that's the total of the office?
Like I said, they've stayed with me. I haven't had them. Um, Shannon picked up pretty good. Um, we all get along.
Do you guys have a lot of extra, I don't know, training opportunities or anything? I mean, classes to go to?
Yeah, I was, yes, we do, uh, through the register deeds, and, um, that we, we go to. I haven't sent them, I'm thinking about sending one to KAC for me, because I'm not gonna...
Yeah.
Go, I feel I've missed too much. I am on a cruise this month.
Yeah.
See my feet.
Ooh.
Oh, yeah. Bested.
What, uh, what's your budget look like as far as your?
I, I have always stayed within my budget very, very well. Uh, I get most of my stuff as much as I can out of my tech fund. I have kept it lower to help the county.
Yeah.
And I believe in Sarah.
She, uh, maybe sends me five bills a year?
Yes, something like that now, because...
Everything else goes through tax money, which doesn't touch the budget at all.
Yeah, I'm, uh, the budget even was slash, you know, lower. I've tried to lower and lower to make up for that.
Yeah.
I don't see anything crazy here, to be honest with you. I do like the board and cable for service, making sure we're all making what we deserve to make. I do wanna remind everybody too, I've been telling everybody this, and it's not a way out for not approving, it's just, I want everybody to be mindful that January 1st, everybody's in the interest of it.
I know.
That's exciting.
I know.
I just want everybody to be mindful of that too, so.
I know.
Um, any, Heather, you got any comments, questions?
No, I mean, I just, I won't be supporting it only just for the same issues from the last two or three meetings in the other departments, but...
Yeah, since we're floating around without the actuals and, and, yeah.
So, with that being said, I will need a motion to approve the personnel payroll action forms brought forth by Linda Madison.
So moved.
I'll second. Motion's been made, second in all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Well, it's nice when we don't, it's nice to, to keep good help, you know?
Oh, definitely. I don't know if I'm, if I haven't done, you know, started all of, oh my goodness, from the training everybody did.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am. I asked for permission to give raises on one day and start this at nine one, is it ten one?
Yes, I think that's acceptable. Stick with it. You have any issues with that? Issues with that?
I know, let me do it. I know you did it.
I know, I know.
You're not moving first, are you?
Oh, I'm.
Something, yeah, you look terrible.
Did you, really?
Sorry.
Week or weekend?
That's leaving.
No.
No, you're back.
How, a week ago or this?
It was trying to go out all week.
So that wasn't just a little sashay, I mean, that was...
So you know how you're a water expert, you notice, so when I see people, I'm like, oh.
Something wrong with him, yeah.
My profession. That is no fun.
Oh, yeah.
And fourteen was when I got back.
You're getting to be an old guy.
Yeah.
Two forty.
Tell me about it.
Not to put you on the spot, but where are we at with that bridge in, in Merribee Road going north?
Uh, we're just, we haven't bid it yet until we get to the power pole. I mean, if you said that you wanted to kinda hold up a little bit.
Well, I'd trouble the ball on that, not getting back with you, Randy. Yeah, it's been pretty, pretty crazy.
Yeah, um, that, that's what I figured. Um, I, I put in for that one, um, we're calling at the grand rider in here, so I put in for that one for that brand too. Um, I just sent Randy some more information on that bridge, a good better breakdown and stuff, um, so we're... Um, so we're still trying to go after that. I checked on one forty-one up at the north of Carbondale. And then it's on Jordan Road. And it was just a little bit west of the River of Trax, there's a river bridge that was built in nineteen twenty.
Nice.
And so I'm.
Who'd rather not have?
And those three is the construction grant.
Yeah.
So.
Well, there's still that bridge on Kansas that we need to have on the radar, because I know.
That one, I put that one on the ones that we don't have plans.
Gotcha.
That one's included in that one. That's bridge number thirteen.
Yeah.
So that is a group of eight bridges that I put on that grant.
Nice.
Trying to get covered on there.
Yeah, because that was another hundred yard bridge.
Um, Lonnie is working on a deal, um, for our new bridge bond.
Okay.
Because I only have two more bridges left on, uh, twenty-two.
He did eight bridges in four years?
I did quite a few.
Wow.
I think seven or eight.
That's a lot.
Wow. Apparently.
Just rolling through and rolling through. So, yeah, we have two left, um, one forty and, um, one forty-four, which we're just waiting for, um, the purchase of the ground to go through on it and set it.
Nice.
That's, that's where we're at right now anyway on it, so.
And I haven't made it out to look at east of town here yet. I know you're telling about it and I haven't made it that way.
Yeah, that's, uh. And then Berlengue Road going north, there is a cost share grant through KOD. I don't know if you're familiar with that one. I talked to Colleen about it. I'll try and send you the link to it, um, that may help us with that one. Because that, and it's gonna be expensive.
Is that a connecting link or something?
It's, it's similar to that, but it's a cost share where they fund it at a little higher level. A little bit less of a match. Uh, so it'd be just something to look into.
Okay.
And I'll forward you that link when we forget.
Thank you.
Uh, so I need a motion to approve status payroll change report brought forth by Ryan Fine.
So moved.
Motion's been made seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Well.
What else you got?
Yeah.
Down here for a referral.
Yeah, how you been?
Uh, we've been kinda getting some recycling blowers this field. Um, but I reached out to all three of you in several communications, um, where it's getting harder to get rid of the cardboard again. Um, like we went through when they closed down that place, uh, out west. And so we are sitting on quite a few bales. There's supposed to be some another truck. The last time I had to wait a month and a half for the truck to show up to even reach any of it.
So, with that being said, my thoughts was after we had talked about the whole recycling, because I feel like it's a huge drain on budget for the benefit that we get, which is not much. But are we bound with that, um?
Lake region?
Yeah, the lake region. It's all the way authority to have recycling?
They would, there's other counties that don't recycle. Um, Alwensie's one of the closest ones that I know of. Um, what would happen is we would probably be exiting lake region if we weren't recycling.
So what's the other benefit of staying with lake region? Why would we not, you know what I mean?
Yeah, um, uh, they do help out on certain things. I'm really good with the grant processes on it. Um, but the grants only cover certain things. Spencer had set it up for that one grant for a skid loader. Um, but after going through a lot of the fine grant and stuff on that, we, because I, I just didn't know, being you at it, what our numbers were gonna look like going forward, just for the tracking purposes. Because you had to hit so many of these things and check that off the box, and I wasn't familiar with recycling at all.
Right.
If I was gonna be able to hit those numbers, or the county was gonna be fully indebted to buy that skid loader, which on a department that brings in no funds.
Yeah.
That is getting way out of the head of your schemes.
Right.
Because I'm, I think that skid loader's gonna be seventy thousand, and then if I'm already losing close to eighty to a hundred a year.
Doesn't make much sense.
Already, I didn't wanna go ahead and add a skid loader to the list.
So what would we do with that stuff if we didn't take recycling? Because people would still bring it in. Uh, that's trash, right?
Yeah, that would have to go through the transfer station.
So then.
Like, a lot of us get to take it in there anyway.
Right.
Um, just because.
It's just that we're taking it there and it's not.
Yeah, we're taking it there because it's contaminated.
Dirty.
Like in some of the pictures showed yet, um, people put aluminum foil pans in there that they cooked in. So you can clearly tell that it had been on the grill and everything. And, um, they've thrown away kids' toys in there. Recycling, anything that's got the recycling emblem on it, they've tried to throw it away or pass it through there.
Right.
Or they just fill up the dumpster out front. Right.
So instead of making money at the landfill on it, we're, we're, it's costing us money to take it to the landfill.
Right.
Yeah, because we still have very large fees that we pay to hands, and runs about thirty thousand a month. And through there, I believe.
So did you figure out kind of the budget impact that that is, that's costing us? Wasn't it around a hundred, a hundred fifty a year?
Well, I, right now, with wages and the fuel, uh, I looked at our old text when we had got those numbers, and it was actually seventy-nine thousand.
Yeah.
Um, that's not including the stuff that we had to haul up to Kansas City, uh, twice a year.
Right.
Or the wages for that. Or if, um, Garrett's Fireworks bring in a whole semi load. I had seven people up there that day. I didn't write any of their time, it's not figured into that.
Right.
We're up there for a day.
Some measure box.
Everything, just, um, for our business. And I kinda took that angle, like, trying to, um, get, like, we can kinda reach out to them and see if we could, you know, get them set up or something. But with them being private, there's, there's not as many grants, I guess.
Right.
Cover that, with them being private.
Yeah.
So what they're in turn doing is if we don't go there to pick it up, they fill up those extra trailer. Then the public can't recycle any of their stuff.
Uh, and I think we've talked, your trailers are kinda getting in pretty bad shape.
Very bad desert repair. Um, we've added metal and stuff in them to kinda hold them together. Just because they're just rusted clear through. Um, Glenn and them purchased those from up north. They were used trailers quite a few years ago, probably when the program kinda began. And so we're getting to the point where if we start having to replace trailers, how you going?
How many of those we had? Two or?
Uh, we have one over.
Oh, yeah.
Two, Berlengue, now we're.
There's three. There's thirty-seven. You have two over there.
Yeah, there's two over there. They have the pods of them at Goosehead one over there. So. Except those trailers, being specialty trailers in charge.
Oh, yeah.
Probably, probably fifty to twenty of these. But, yeah, I was, I was just looking, I, I know, I know the public is gonna wanna weigh in on this. And, and that's fine.
Right.
But, uh, I mean, I think we should have, uh, a meeting or something where we can get together and see how we're supposed to go forward.
Yeah.
I think that would be the best.
I don't know much about that lake region. I mean, I don't.
It's a group that we're involved in, and we pay a certain fee, membership fee, if you will, annually. And they help us receive grants and things like that to help fund these kind of things. Um, I don't know that it's really turned out for us in the positive. I mean, maybe it's some.
There, there have been some in the past, yeah, but, um, in.
But when it comes to the recycling portion.
You're still holding that.
Right.
And it doesn't pay, I mean, it's not like, it doesn't pay for the cost of operations. It would be special projects.
No, it was special projects. So, um, with me and her talking before a little bit about maybe trying to get a better, like a horizontal, about a bale or and stuff like that, but, um, you know, you're at eighty-some thousand dollars there.
And you're still sorting, and you can't mail the trash and cardboard.
Trash is still gonna go back. You're still.
The issues that you're dealing with now is still gonna be an issue, but now we've got the eighty thousand dollar piece of equipment.
Yeah, yeah. So I was like, well, maybe we should go that route, maybe she would discuss.
So I think what we'll do, uh, when is our next evening meeting?
Last September meeting.
The end of this month, yeah. I think we need to cut down into evening.
I will be gone at the last, uh, September, I'm not sure what day it's on.
September thirtieth.
The thirtieth of September.
I will be gone that day.
Or about that night. Already gone. Well, then, how about we put it on for the twenty-third? We could move our evening meeting to the twenty-third. I know we said it for the last meeting of the quarter, but if everybody. Because I agree, I would like to have the public weigh in on a decision of this magnitude, if you will.
Yes.
And see what their thoughts are. I mean, if they're okay with spending that kind of money to recycle, so be it.
But.
At the same time.
We're gonna have to probably find out a better way to, on a different key going forward.
Right.
Just the fact, uh, um, if we keep utilizing transfer station money to pay for it, we, we're looking at, okay, to keep the transfer station going, why it's paying for this. Um, a compactor, you know, to buy you more time out there, so you don't have to buy more land.
Right.
Um, because any land that was up to the landfill is gonna be three million dollar when you have to buy more ground.
Yeah.
To keep your transfer station landfill going with the C and D. Um, and that's where I've been looking into these compactors. Franklin County had one, and it saved them a lot of headspace because they were actually able to compact.
Every time they put a cap on their layers, they were able to keep it down.
I don't even think they moved across the road yet. They ended up buying another land when they found that compactor. And they are still on, on the same area that they're on. So, um, just so you don't have to increase your footprint.
Right.
You know, it's a touchy subject.
Oh, yeah, but it's one we need to address. So do you guys have any issues with that? Say moving that last meeting to the twenty-third so that Ryan can be in attendance and kinda give his side? Michelle, any issues with that?
Move the meeting?
To the twenty-third, so that Ryan can be in attendance, and he can have this on the agenda?
I would suggest that we just add a second meeting that month, because we have every meeting and all that stuff on the thirty.
Uh, so we, we've just had the thirtieth and the twenty-third?
As we need, it would be my suggestion.
You guys have any heartache against that? I forgot we had every meeting the twenty-third, or the thirtieth. That could be a big meeting.
What's that on?
For the solar farm.
I don't know why.
Same reason the anti-solar people come. Uh, I know it sounds easy to some people, but you're talking about people's constitutional rights. It's not something to blame.
On the.
That's my sense.
On the twenty-third, you want the evening meeting, because are we gonna advertise for people to come?
Yes.
For the recycling.
Notice that this is on the agenda and discuss it with the public.
Worked fine for me, I think, as far as I know.
They'll be.
My calendar is in the car, so.
You don't know nothing, huh?
I normally keep it. I organized my, I went through a whole bag and cleaned it and reorganized it, and my calendar I put.
Had a girl, yeah, that's perfect.
Okay. Recycle.
I'm sure people have questions about, like, how much tonnage are we actually, you know, moving, where we're putting it, you know, that kind of deal, and so I don't know. I don't know how easy it'd be to come up with some of those loose figures or not. Because, like I said, we're funding it with the, with the transfer station, but we're also not taking that money into the transfer station. So it's, it's costing you twice, I mean.
Yeah.
And then, like I say, when the predators come in, most of the things, anyway.
Yeah.
Like that one the other day, there was, that I took a picture of, you see them on foil with the cardboard with the.
Yeah.
And we just kinda decked out all the cardboard that we had, um, when I was helping.
And you got two people in there about every day, don't you?
Every, yeah.
So, sounds like that discussion will be for the twenty-third evening? So if you would figure up tighter numbers for you, maybe have a nice little rundown?
Yeah.
Because you all have questions and write this up.
Yeah, I mean, it's a service that we've been offering to the counties.
Right.
But there's costs associated with it, so.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Is that all you had, Ryan?
Yeah.
Very good.
Where's Tricia? Okay, the contract audit letter. Um, I will need a motion to approve signing the financial statement approval to the Lloyd Group.
Now, I'm still, I mean, I'm not, I know I'm the new guy, but I'm still on the hook for all these, even though they're for prior, prior years, right? Would I, I mean, I still need to sign them, right?
Yeah, I mean, you don't have to sign anything. You don't feel comfortable signing, but.
I mean, that's probably just standard practice, what happens, right? The new guy has to sign on for what has happened in the past anyway.
Oh, uh, that's a good question. Um, the financial reports are a collection of all the department heads' data. Obviously, you guys don't su- any supervise generally, but wouldn't have any, um, direct knowledge of whatever you're trusting and their separate activities. And so really, this is just the auditor asking you to make it more proper. And saying, yes, you know, this appears to be in the form that we would expect with, you know, there's clear, clear recommendations.
Yeah.
And updates on those recommendations. Um, but whether you sign it or you don't sign it, it's still ultimately your responsibility.
Right.
It's more of just kind of a moment in time for a professional thing.
They looked at this.
He can only, uh, provide services to the level of the integrity, the integrity of the data provided. And at the end of the day, it's your responsibility to answer if that makes sense.
Yeah.
And so I'm not sure what's been done in the past. Everyone had a transitional year as they came on the commission.
I looked it over and signed it in my, in my ear.
Yeah, I was just wondering if it was, if there was a way to, you know, skate out of it or not.
I mean, you know, there's no judge here to order you to do something. So if you're not comfortable signing it.
I mean, to the best of my knowledge, everything was done accurately.
Well, I, I mean, I will say as a prosecutor, I'm really lowly put in that position of having to declare a criminal complaint. Information, criminal complaint is true, correct, having done the investigation yourself.
Right.
So upon information of belief, you know, you're welcome to clarify it.
In all probability.
Well, that's how I always look at it. It's to the best of your knowledge.
Yeah.
Does that mean that it's perfect or a hundred percent right, true, accurate? No, it just means to the best of your knowledge.
I am beyond reproach, because as far as I know.
Exactly. As far as I know, this was done correctly and it appears correctly.
Next year, what will be different? That's my question.
Yeah.
You'll have another year in the, in the chair, but every year, it's, you all are responsible for the day that you take the oath. Um, or the, I can, so, um, I don't.
He really inspires confidence when he talks, you know.
I was trying to say. I like it. It's truth. It's blunt honesty. It's like, hey, listen, dude, you can sign it or you don't have to sign it, but it's all on you at the end of the day.
What happens if we tell Scott, no? I, I don't know. We don't get our budget done in time.
And we miss our hearings and. We don't get our budget done in time and we miss our hearings and blah, 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 then we're really in trouble.
Is, is Scott coming in at some point?
The fifteenth.
So whatever we have to...
Fifteenth is coming in to explain it. This is the document that we go through every year. This is the one that we sign that states that we agree with their word, that it's true and accurate to the best of our knowledge and gets shot back to them. They make the adjustments, they come in the meeting and then explain the budget and what they did to us and the audit, uh, explain what the issues were and what corrections need to be made.
That'd be the fifteenth.
And it's been the same process since I've been here.
That'd be the fifteenth or sixteenth.
All I'm saying is that if you're uncomfortable with process every year, or two of you are, or three of you are, or one of you are, it's just a process, like...
Two, six, sixteen?
Sorry.
Yeah. Don't ask me to sign this until you give me a chance to ask questions. I think that's a fair approach. Is he wanting it signed this week?
Mm-hmm, they wanted it signed last week.
For what purpose?
Uh, seems so they can move forward with their, with their portion. We've gone through this every year. They send it to us for us to review and sign and then we kick it back and then they kick it back and then we kick it back and they kick it back. Then at some point in time, we find the sign it.
Well, that's the budget, but I thought this was in regards to the audit.
Yeah.
This is in regards to audit.
We do the same thing with everything that comes from them, it's not been any different. Yeah, financial statement. And they have, uh, provided a copy of our disclosure checklist that we use to ensure appropriate financial statement presentations and disclosures. Financial statements are a responsibility of management and it is important that management review and approve them. After your review, please sign below and email this letter to our office. After we receive this approval, we will then make the appropriate copies. We are pleased to provide, be providing the audit services to the county and hope that you are satisfied with our services.
I think it would be fine for you to just wait and ask questions. I, as your attorney, I am a little jealous of your, um, like, I don't scout anybody, I don't, anybody else. I owe you guys a sense of, you know, what are the risks? I'm not signing it, what are the risks of me signing it? I don't see a big downside, but just saying, as soon as you can get here, you'll have to come to public.
Uh-oh.
Sorry. And then after that, after you have a chance to ask those questions, I would think that you have the confidence to say,
Sure.
this is my audit, whatever happened before, I wasn't here, I'm how I am.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, it's not... I just like the idea of being involved in the process that you're signing off on, I guess, is the lamest way of saying it.
People don't approve because they're not at a meeting. Many times, the commissioner will not go on minutes.
Right.
So...
I just don't have a point of reference to know if it was right or not.
Barbara, remember, B. Madison, that, the case that established the idea of judicial review in the eighteen century, maybe? It all had to do with successive administration signing the appointment warrant or something.
Or something like that.
Previous administration, or previous administrations.
And this one here, I think we all got this electronically, but this is the letter that, from the audit, are the areas that we have deficiencies in and then there are usually the recommendations of what you need to change to come in compliance. So this one's really good to read.
Right.
I mean, it's my fourth audit and nothing's really changed.
Yeah.
Well, he, he did provide some updates on...
I'm just, in general, I mean, kinda the same issue we had for at least a four years after.
Well, I mean, I think setting aside time actually going through the audit is this issue would be...
So a lot of, in, in the audit, you will see, uh, like, he's rolled a lot of stuff. Like, some stuff goes back way beyond my time. Like, there's just stuff that's really rolled from year to year to year, so he's, um, tracked that or addressed to that. So some stuff is really, really old. There might be some newer stuff I don't...
Okay, sure. So we're not, no motion to sign it?
If, I think, yeah.
It's okay, really, it's up to you guys. I'm perfectly comfortable with it, we've done this every year.
Yeah.
But if we wanna change it, obviously, like Josh stated, it's our prerogative.
I would just like to be a little more involved in the process. I'm just, you know, I'm the new guy, I don't...
Right, right. Oh, I got it. So we will table that until the, it's, it's the sixteenth he's gonna be here, right? That's Monday? So we move our meeting to Monday, do you?
He's not available yet.
Why, is he not available, don't you say?
Because I know we talked about it, but I couldn't remember the conversation, why?
I think the fifteenth is just the budget, the, yeah, the fifteenth was the budget hearing and the sixteenth is the normal meeting.
Right, so we're fifteenth and sixteenth.
It's the fifteenth and the evening?
Evening, mm-hmm.
That's revenue neutral, and what type of stock? So you're gonna try to do this and a revenue neutral hearing? Hmm, I don't know if that's good.
It was like, two days, five to build in and then you...
Does he have any availability? I think combining the revenue neutral period with looking at audit is the recipe for disaster. Because you're, I mean, if you're proposing potentially not go revenue neutral, that is the time for citizens to come in and express...
Yeah.
Concerns and... Air out, your attorney's office has to make it same time.
So we'll reach out to Scott then, I guess, and treat him new out? Okay.
And, I don't know, do you, Chairman, do you view that as a commission motion or as a individual permission or sign?
Oh, this, the financial document, uh, I view that as a commission motion.
Because the other signature lines are for the clerk and the treasurer.
I think there's sign, there's a individual's question.
Yeah, if I remember correctly. Let me double check though that you said that, yes. So the chair and then, you know, all three commissioners are here, clerk and treasurer.
Yeah, I guess it's, it would be considered action, right?
Yeah. Okay, no worries, we will let Mr. Lloyd know and... Take care of that.
I need you.
Property machine contract. Is Tricia here, Chairman?
Yeah. I got stuff or something.
Oh, right.
Um, so this is information on Logan, this is the letter that is, they helped draft, used it a little bit. This way essentially get rid of our...
Who directed this? The...
Pro copy.
Pro copy, yeah.
Pro copy. That's just like the standard format.
So we're gonna run this, there are legal tapes, I have legal tapes.
They would buy out, um, the rest of our stuff. And the monthly amount is less than what we're paying now, uh, eliminate statements. Logan has not been out one single time to service anything since I have been here. Giving toners and waste packages, it's both income calls. The waste packages are up to around seven hundred dollars a piece now and that should, you know, be included in the contract. Uh, we have to call any deridings every month. Uh, make sure that you watch our toner all the time and with pro copy, they do all that for you. Make sure everyone, I can't.
Where did they have them?
Um, they were kinda back everywhere, but you sit at one, I think you would probably be servicing us the most often. Uh, I did check the one around, uh, just in other places. They kind of got held up first and then I never went back. The attorney's office does have pro copy, or pro copy and they do like them, yeah, pending trouble.
Is this just for clerk's office?
For now, um, pretty confident that when the new treasurer comes in, that she will switch as well. We're just having a lot of issues with Logan. Just no maintenance.
Right.
You don't wanna serious stuff, you're... They also send you, uh, a base rate, um, copy fee whether you use it or whether you don't. So if you don't go over, then you're still paying for them.
How many departments are with Logan?
Health Department, Treasure Us. Maybe Seagulls.
Does everybody pay for their copier contracts out of their own budgets within their departments?
And of course, combining all of the Logan contracts are staggered.
Yeah.
You never know, you're gonna be over. Or this, if you add the treasurer later, theirs might be slightly more, just for a little while.
Yeah.
Because it would end in our dates, so we're all in the same cycle. So contracts would be over all the same cycle. Um, with Logan, I get probably a dozen statements a month from them. Just because it's one for the copier equipment and then it's one for the equipment, it's one for the copies, you gotta call in the copies and it's one for the toner.
They're in the paper business. It's job security.
Right. Twelve different accounts, they own the building.
So this would be, part of this would be to exit that contract and it wouldn't...
They've mainly set front page.
And write downs for the clerk's office.
Right.
And then other people would want to... Yeah, and maybe they would give us a fine.
So...
Multi-purchase.
Logan.
Multi-purchase price.
This is the new one?
Yeah, the pro copy is, yes.
There is the contract in here.
Logan?
Yeah.
I'm gonna bring it back. May I bring it back?
I'll swap quickly. There you go.
I'm not letting you forget that.
It's pretty tough, really, but that's the best topic I have.
I get one time, I'm gonna yell there.
Right.
I have had some struggle with getting the contracts from Logan.
What is it?
She's here.
Busy store?
She's up at the snacks, coffee, cheese.
Found a pen? Did you find a pen? It worked good? Sweet?
Yes.
I'll sell it to you.
Yeah, but I don't have like fifty dollars in my pocket, so it's...
That's what happened to me. I actually found a carriage pin with it in my house.
It's a five-year term.
An actual carriage or nail, not a pin on a nail.
Twenty-seven, between the one that I ran?
Logan was out?
Yeah.
Yes, and pro copy will wipe them out.
Had no, no upfront cost to us.
It was like two hundred dollars a month.
They really were?
Which is less than what we gave Logan.
I'd say we get the letter to all of the offices. So hello?
The treasurer's office doesn't want to do anything.
My sentence, Becky, will you hear mine?
Yeah.
I did talk to Becky a little bit. Becky's like, yeah, it's... But we roll back because there was...
Yes, sir.
Oh, thank you.
Or since you've had all that difficulty.
Okay, so, I assume this very back page? This page, quote acceptance, is our signature page?
Yes.
What's the, is there a dollar on it?
What's the, what's the length of term on that one, did you say?
Sixty months at two hundred dollars and fifty-nine cents.
Oh, it's a five-year one?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
So, there's three different...
Tears?
Three, four different pages, but they all have the same price. Are there any differences here or are they just repeat prints? Uh, there is, let's see here.
Is it for different equipment or what is?
Off the link, C eight zero three five, all gets a... That's the same. So I'm gonna guess they're just extra prints. And then you print a copy.
You're doing Amazon finds only by miles.
Because they're all the same. So we just need to sign one. So the contract is for sixty months, um, thirty-five pages per minute, four trays, two hundred fifty single sheet, single pass, four trays and a stand, includes delivery, installation, setup and assisted networking for two hundred dollars and fifty-nine cents a month.
Does it say on there that they're buying us out too, or buying out this?
This price includes a buyout of up to fifty-four hundred as well as shipping costs to return current device.
Which that's as well within our... They're not looking at that.
Good.
So, any other questions?
No, sir.
So, you might've said this when I stepped out. It's because she started to talk about this. So if we do this and then if other departments want to add on, can we add to the five-year contract where we get them all on the same, uh, term?
Well, it's gonna be a question for them.
It just may...
Because you said a lot of them, they all expire at different times.
Right, it may be a little bit higher monthly price. I mean, if they...
They want that long term from...
If they're in six months regardless, so if they join at fifty months, you're gonna have to make up those ten months.
Oh.
Divided into the rest of the fifty months.
So they, they won't just let people join on then? They just won't let departments join on? That was my question, was if they just...
But they will, it's just a stipulation.
Yeah, I was just hoping they could join on, on the same terms, like if they came in halfway through, just add them on and then at the renewal...
We could chicken trade with them later.
All right, all right, I'll need a motion to approve entering into a contract with pro copy for sixty bucks for Xerox off the link, C eight zero three five color printer. Uh, price includes buyout of up to fifty-four hundred as well as shipping costs returned for a device at a cost of two hundred dollars and fifty-nine cents per month.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Okay, and then I'll need a motion to approve sending... Okay, and then I'll need a motion to approve sending. This letter to Logan Business Machines terminating the contract. With Logan Business.
And is that one ending or we're just ending it early?
Ending early.
And is there, we've probably talked about this, is there a penalty?
There is, but they, the new one we just signed will pay that.
Oh, they'll pay the penalty?
They pay out up to fifty-four hundred.
Okay.
And pay for shipping and the device.
So this is just a letter of notice, is that?
Correct.
Yeah.
Just a motion to approve sending the letter.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose. Motion carries.
Use your mean handwriting on that one.
Right. Okay. Ms. Webb. For the, for Logan, sir.
Thank you.
Alright, this is for the Great American Kite Festival. Calling your office off. See their site map. On page four, page five, their liability insurance. Security conjunction with the lack of lake.
So what I'd say with the lack of lake, our sheriff's department already has traffic control, so it could be not really adding much.
Us, yeah, looks like they picked a spot that'd be out of the way anyway.
Yeah.
You don't have any concerns with this, do you? Okay. Yeah, I think from where that location is there, you'll be able to see it real good from the highway, so like people driving by would be able to, what's that? Because. Yeah, yeah, well. It's on the state road at least.
There you go.
Yeah, can we go over there? Let's go check that out.
Right. Alright.
I was thinking next week I'll be having a little tour rides for, um, tour of the chicken.
Bike ride?
Mm-hmm, that is, um, Lawrence, part of the county, they're gonna come in.
It just swoops in and, yeah.
Is that different than the one we just brought? There was a different bike that you brought recently. That's a different one? Okay, because I saw an article about the Lawrence bike group and I couldn't remember if that was the one we just did or maybe the one you're referencing.
That's the next one. Uh, one of the articles, you know, you just did, it's.
Oh, okay.
Do you have the type on the special?
Oh, type five. Yeah, it's office, the one that he was.
I'll sign this one. Okay. So I'll need a motion to sign and approve the special event application type five to the Great American Kite Festival in partnership with the Lack of Lake Event.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pose. Motion carries.
No, no, thank you. No, I'm drowning in paper here. I was trying to ask Heather where she hides it all and she says she, she just gathers it up and then eventually purges it once in a while.
I, I organize it in my drawer and then generally once a year I try to purge.
Yeah, gather it up, maybe it didn't sound good.
Yeah, I'm just like gathering the stuff.
There's been a couple of things I think I stopped online.
Well. There's times that I've gotten rid of stuff, I'm like, I won't need this and then down the road you need it.
Yeah.
Whoops.
But it is what it is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You never know.
Yeah, that's what.
So just, you do the best you can with.
Well, I've got these drawers, I'm just worried that I actually fill them up and then what?
Well, you look at it at the end of the year and then go, oh, I don't need this. Yes.
I just save it for the next guy.
Save it for the next guy.
They may need that information.
It's just your problem now, yeah.
Well, you gotta think of it as you're down to my favors.
Oh, yeah.
They don't know, like when you come in as a new guy.
That's right, I was looking at it all wrong.
Nice and organized so you can be like, oh, what'd they do back here?
Uh-huh.
I'm just saying it's all, it's been.
It's all perspective, I see.
Because you're gonna read all that.
It's not my problem if you read something.
I said, because you're gonna read it.
I provided to the beans. Okay, so. We don't have welds or anything yet?
It's, we're just coming down.
Okay, HR duties and clerk resolution discussion. Excuse me. I thought we had it printed up. You're gonna bring us a resolution?
She says that's on you guys.
And then Josh goes, oh, yeah. Can't we connect you to our clerk so you don't have to carry that thing around?
Tried.
We did?
Yep.
Didn't we try to run it up?
Well, this is kind of special.
It's also awkward to walk behind you guys every time. Um, resolution. Uh, had to do with a, uh, one-time stipend for twenty twenty-five. The draft that I sent you all was, was that one, so that would be the discussion today instead of the draft. Is there? A discussion?
I was just reading through it right now, just to refresh my memory.
Oh, can we print those?
Yep, sorry. The Wi-Fi. Move from in the budget for a Wi-Fi extender in this room?
Um, I think that's in the next executive session.
No, we need them, yeah.
On a Wi-Fi extender?
Yes.
Well, no, a whole long discussion about our.
Oh, no, I was just wanting to go on Amazon and purchase a thirty-dollar extender.
I have one.
Well, can I buy it for you?
I'll bring it next week.
And Josh, is that your budget?
Because I don't need the.
Um, I think we can take it out of, um.
It's free.
I don't know if it still has to be budgeted as accounting asset.
It's true.
I don't, it's not. Trying this for me.
Okay, so part of this discussion.
Are we printing that?
He's working on it, he's trying. You haven't did it either.
I do, but I don't think it's filled out all the way.
It is not, that was for us to fill out the rest of the way. Be it resolved by the border county commissioner of Sichuan County, Kansas, Sashel Moore, Sichuan County clerk, you paid a one-time total stipend of double X. For additional human resources activities performed by her during fiscal year twenty twenty-five, to be paid in monthly installments as a supplement to her base pay as county clerk on the remaining payroll period in fiscal year twenty twenty-five. That is the basis of discussion. And what was the requested amount again?
Way back, but it was denied.
Right, but I don't remember what.
Remember I had a, for a third week.
Okay, I connected to my phone. Wi-Fi, I cannot read that. Technology about it.
And this resolution also is for. Such time as, uh. Yeah, there it is. So they could, Sashel Moore's temporary duties related to human resources services for carrying workforce fiscal year twenty twenty-five. So this will need to be.
Redone each year, persisting?
No, yeah, so the, I think the general outline of the discussion are, since the HR position, the last HR director resigned. Um, that position is hired by the county commission. And reports to the higher fire authority, but on day-to-day supervision there to work with the clerk's office, that's an existing resolution. And since that, I think, was that January twenty twenty-four, if I remember right?
I think so.
Um, that position has stayed vacant, there's been a budget, I think, of around forty-three thousand dollars, I don't know if anything else is taken from that. But since that has been vacant, the clerk's office and specifically Michelle has been in charge of HR. Um, payroll, uh, is, uh. Uh, HR can be lots of different things, um, but I think that payroll is not directly HR. HR is usually, um, employee handbook, complaints, policy, benefits, helping with open enrollment and having a place for people to go. If there's a complaint about a supervisor, EEOC complaint, those types of things. Um, worker laws that apply to the county, they have rights to. And so, um, that portion is, I think, separate, potentially from the payroll and AP. Those two functions, I think, have been probably taking up most of your time. Um, and going forward. You may want to have a discussion as to what you're talking about, is it really HR or is it something broader? That you want to provide some guidance on how those administrative functions are, um, accomplished, because traditionally it's been the clerk's office. Um, we've had a couple of payroll vendor, you know, on, onboarding that have been a lot of hours. Um, I think that technically for purposes of twenty twenty-five, well. Taken into account, but long-term, I think you really need to decide. Is that resolution still good? That you do intend to hire somebody else to service HR? And is it HR that you're talking about or is it, you know, having someone who can do multiple administrative tasks? Uh, going forward, because I think Michelle has, um, concerned just with the additional workload. On those administrative tasks versus kind of the core county clerk duties which are being your secretary minutes, um, repository of the county elections. Um, and those types of things, and then just traditionally not the statute of administration. So I think for purposes of this resolution, this present, you could, uh. Uh, just isolate twenty twenty-five budget, the money's there. If you want to allocate a stipend, it would not be part of her county, her pay. The base pay would continue to be the same, and then as you think about these issues in the coming months for twenty twenty-six. Ask whether that base pay in the elected county officials' resolution is to be changed, if there's a long term.
Right. So the resolution will be just for, the resolution discussion will be for a stipend to more or less be in addition to, um. The elected, uh, official budget for salary, I guess.
What was our payroll costing in? What's coming out of that? Twenty thousand a year, twenty-three thousand a year, roughly? Sorry, forty, that leaves another twenty.
Are you meaning HR? You mean HR?
No, I am not meaning HR. I mean exactly what I said. I mean what we're paying for payroll.
Oh, you mean the payroll, the software?
Something like twenty-some odd thousand plus a interim fee or whatever, I don't remember what the.
So then you got about twenty thousand left in that budget. What portion of that goes for commodities?
You're saying four thousand, how do you feel?
Okay.
Your question was because the ADP, you're saying it's coming out of the contractual part of the HR?
What we're trying to do is paint the picture of what is already being spent out of that budget, so that we know what is left for a stipend to be split up.
Stipend. And then main payroll out of clerk, because it's the clerk's function, it was not contracted to be put under HR.
Yes, but we approved to have it come out of that budget way back when. Is what, when we set this, when we decided to do it.
They really haven't had to spend much, because it's not supposed to be done until patient stuff.
But there may be costs in twenty twenty-five. Um, the.
Do we have a copy of what that HR breakdown is?
Oh, um, can, can you? How do we run a report to see what's been spent today?
You have to go and see I C or is that what you're doing?
And then is the county clerk budget going to be? Close to capacity with the added payroll, software or with our savings and staff?
Right, so that's why we approved to take it out of that HR budget originally, is to make sure that her budget didn't go over.
It didn't change the staff budget there or office budget, whatever.
Really?
The person, this is HR for, the personnel is thirty-six thousand, contractual is two thousand seven fifty. And it doesn't show either of those have been used, and then commodities, the budget's five thousand and thirty-three, thirty-four hundred's been used.
So there's around forty, thirty-eight we're not putting.
Line us here.
I can give you everything except the number.
And you were saying that this is for HR services only, not any of the payroll stuff?
Really?
I, I think. Your policy, we need, we need to make it work for twenty twenty-six. And where these functions are allocated, you, you guys, currently the HR budget was for a standalone HR director, part-time. Based on previous commissions, splitting that out. And then it was kind of merged back in, but not. So we're kind of at.
But by doing the stipend, that would, uh, be the gap fill until whatever. Whatever we decide as a new policy or if we have a, however we'd admit to direct those duties.
Yeah, Michelle's asked two separate calendar years, if this is the problem you've got, spending additional time on this. And she'd like to be compensated for the additional hours. Um, because she's elected, it's, there is some case law regarding setting a base salary for the statute of work duties. And then additional salary on top of that, I think you get an election stipend from the state, is that correct, Michelle?
It's a percent.
Like, it's additional pay.
Yeah.
So that's what I believe. So that's what I believe the case was about. I think it was a county treasurer, but it had to do with motor vehicle stipend and whether they could count that.
As their base salary.
As the base salary and then basically pay that. And the court said, no, you have to decide what the county clerk's statute order base stipend is.
Right.
And then you, the fact that the state decides to pay them extra, you can't consider that.
Right.
But here, but I think that's analogous to this situation, which is if you ask the county attorney to do animal control. Then. There's just basic questions. Because I don't want to get to a point where, you know. As an official, you know, as a county attorney, as a county treasurer, as a county clerk. You know, yes, you have the power to purse, but at some point, those elected officials say, this is my job, that's not my job. And as a commission, I think trying to make it all work together is your responsibility to decide where functions are serviced.
And then in the meantime, it's it's happening in that office.
Right. And I mean payroll has happened in that office for decades. But it, the fact that we lost an employee and then it was not backfilled. Either those functions have not been provided just because the unique nature of a HR director. There's just not as much services being provided to employees or they are being provided in a little bit different combination way. Payroll accounts, well, not AP, but payroll and what everyone certainly does. Interact with the traditional HR do, so it's just not nice to clean. This is HR, this is administrative.
So with that being said. What, would you like to remind us of your request? Twenty three thousand a year? Was it part of that?
And this would just be for the clerks within the clerk's salary, not within.
This would be a stipend, an extra.
Right. To collect from last year. And now it's remaining balance in. Just because as well as left.
Right.
Yeah, it's only done anything before.
So whatever you pick for the stipend amount, that would be divvied up between the remaining paychecks, pay cycles in twenty five?
Yeah, or nine months in, eight months in. Just if you pick an annual amount, it's split up into what now three paychecks, October.
And the remaining is what? Twenty three? The remainder is what they requested?
I can't.
Twenty three? That's what sticks in my head.
That was on last year's figures and I can't get the server to let me on.
Right. Because I would propose that we offer that stipend for twenty twenty five. And then moving forward, you would set it as a monthly.
Something, sorry, anything at this year.
Of fifteen hundred a month. Does that sound about right?
For twenty twenty six?
Mm hmm. Which that's not part of this, but it's part of the discussion.
Yeah, I was gonna say, surely we could figure something out for.
Right. Or we could dissolve that resolution altogether and pay her a stipend and have those duties in her office and have the pay reflect the extra duties. I mean, there's multiple ways we can handle it.
Well, I think one of the issues that's happening here is, Michelle, you you have been communicating the additional hours even working. For for anyone else, you know, I think that would be unsustainable. And I think at some point. The question of locating that function within the county clerk, official or the or the department is one consideration. And if you're going to give certain duties to the department, then it's. We expect you to hire who you need to service that so that one person isn't doing three jobs.
Yeah, just throwing money out, it's not going to solve the problem. We can't, it's not sustainable. So we need to divvy that up somehow, direct it, whether it's a different, whatever. Position that we call or whatever, but that's, I mean, that would be moving forward. That's what I'd like to see.
So that that would be my question, Michelle, is just, is there a point if you have X amount of money in your budget to service? A certain very clearly defined amount of duties. Is there a plan to basically delegate that amongst the staff with contractors with payroll, you know, with the software and ease the burden? That I just don't, I don't think that there's necessarily an L S eight problem because you're not, you're exempt as an elected official and as a supervisor. But just from a human standpoint, it's not sustainable. So how, what does the commission need to do to be able to reorganize that stuff so that you can go along with that?
The pay is ridiculous. I mean, I can't get. I mean, I could go down and work at McDonald's right now and make as much money as I'm making. And not have to use any brain power or do anything.
But she did run for the election. I mean, you did get elected to it.
Yeah, but she got elected to a position that didn't have the extra duties that were put on her by the commissioners. And that was done before you got here. So I don't think that's fair whatsoever. I think that due to our argumentations, not you weren't here, the three of us prior to. And the damage that we did to that office by trying to separate an HR department out so we could have control is what caused this. I don't think we should have ever done that, and I've said it a hundred times. And now we have an issue where we've had an employee that has dedicated herself to fix the issues that were not of her own doing. We all know what the issues were. We all know where it lies. Uh, we had one that had did payroll for thirty years or twenty three years, however long she was here. She had her own way of doing it. No one ever messed with it. No one ever changed it. And we found a lot of issues, not to blame the previous person. It stays what it is. We tried for a month to train that person before that person left. Through our ineptedness, our clerk has now had to pick up all the slack. And I don't think that rewarding an employee for trying to do that is outlandish. I don't think she's asking above and beyond. We have issues in that office, bills that I haven't been getting paid that she's working on. But all of this is the one piece that we caused. All of this, when all these employees left, the pay's all low, people have been fussing about it the entire time I've been here. And we have an opportunity to do something about it and we sit on our hands. So we've been handling every other office. We've been taking care of everybody. We've been doing good things. But I don't understand why this is such a point of contention. She, and I know Wells can attest to it, not to throw you into this conversation, but almost everybody that has to deal with Michelle understands she works a lot of hours in these things. I've asked her a hundred times. I've told her myself to go home, but there's things that have to get done. So you can't just leave them. You can't just drop it. If you would have done what ninety percent of this country would have done. We'd be in a really bad situation because most people would have just dropped it and went home. That is that I don't deserve this and I'm not going to do it. So I don't think that she's out of line. I think we need to reward her. I don't disagree. I think we do need to make steps on the HR position. Uh, I would love nothing more. I've said it before, we dissolved the resolution, we shoved the HR back in her office. She has the budget added to hers and you hire the HR person. Because you need to take some of that stuff off. I would be fine with that or.
Right.
But something's got to be done. She's been, we've kicked this cane out of rope for two years. I can't believe that she, I can't believe you're still here. I quit. I'd have gave you all the finger and walked out. Because it's, it is asinine at what we've asked our people to do over the years. Don't get us started in the shares department. Because they've had a lot too. So I would propose that we pay her a stipend. We need to agree on it. And then I would propose that we spend the next three months figuring out what we're going to do with that HR department. But we need to pay her for what she's already done. This is my proposal. I would, I would propose also that it matches what you had requested in the past two years. I think that's fair because it's one year's budget for two years worth of work, extra work. That is my proposal.
And what number was that for your one time total stipend of?
Have you found it yet?
I can't get on server. I want to say it was twenty eight, but it was what we left.
Okay, well, twenty three stuck in my head, but twenty eight is twenty eight is fine as well. And that would, that would clearly, that would get you caught up. That would get you paid for the previous two years of all that overtime. Because even though you're a salaried employee, uh, there's a certain amount of overtime that people need to be compensated for. And it's not like we're in a situation where we can approve or disapprove your overtime. Because as an elected official, we can't tell you, just go home and drop what you're doing. Can't. State statutes. So I would, uh, I will move to approve resolution two zero two five, number what?
And be twenty twenty five dash twenty one.
Dash twenty one. Uh, and approve a one time stipend of twenty eight thousand dollars for additional human resource activities performed by her during fiscal year of twenty twenty five. To be paid in monthly installments as a supplement to her base base county clerk in remaining payroll periods in fiscal year of twenty twenty five.
Do you need to put on there what fund it comes out of or is that all right on, I mean, just to?
We could add it as part of the motion. So as part of that motion to be paid from the HR fund. I'll just add it in the motion, not the resolution.
Okay, and that was your, you moved?
I moved.
And that put this to bed. We wouldn't talk about it again.
Michelle? This, that would be good. You would be fine with that? I'll put this to bed with this question. They're gonna make it fair, I guess, is what we're saying.
So you're twenty eight thousand for the rest of the year and then what time is January one?
We have three months that we're going to figure that out to make sure. We're not going to take the whole three months, but we're gonna have a whole nother discussion on that because we have to figure out, we need to have that discussion with you as well. And like a serious discussion about how we want to see HR moving forward. Because if it's going to be in your office, you gotta be able to hire somebody. Forty three thousand dollars isn't going to hire a full time HR. But it would get it, you know, it would be a nice and.
Time they were making like thirty two dollars an hour.
Right.
Well, I'll second this motion on the resolution.
Motion's been made in second. It all was in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, that takes care of that. And then we need to have a discussion next week regarding those HR duties. Mr. Wells, have you had something for us? Seeing you gritting your teeth over there because I was pulling you into it.
This is going to be some of those eleven?
Have these computers support one of those eleven?
Yeah.
Most screens are live with the I C security updates. Obviously, we don't want to get to the point where they're vulnerable. So this is the majority of them. The rest of them, we can get by just because they're.
That's good.
This is just the ones that are on the servers. Uh, just come out of the ones that are.
He wants you to read that paragraph. That's the official rewording. Sorry. Who was thinking?
Sorry.
It's okay.
Excuse me, I don't allow me on too much today.
Oh.
I'm not tired.
So does that, uh, sorry, Chris, I might have missed those. Is that going through like the Sentry business stuff?
No, because they're not contract with Sentry.
Yeah, they do. They're.
They've got somebody else. And you're just buying these outright from Dell, right?
They're giving them to you on their. They come down from the given, how much you give them less.
Same issues as what were happening with those departments, so old stuff.
Yeah, fortunately.
Running out of updates. Running out of support, yeah.
Right. So I need a motion to approve purchase order four zero four six in the amount of nine thousand three hundred and forty five dollars and ninety six cents to be paid to Dell Technologies. From fund one ninety two, uh, for seven Dell Pro Micro computers and three Dell Pro Micro computers.
So moved?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. It all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Next. I'll need a motion to approve purchase order number four zero four seven in the amount of thirteen thousand three hundred and seventy three dollars and thirty four cents. To be paid to Dell Technologies from the fund one twenty seven for six Dell Pro rugged, I assume.
Modern laptops. Yes, they're the rugged laptops.
Laptops.
So moved?
I'm sorry, did you just motion it second?
Motion's been made in second. It all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Anything else, Mr. Wells? You're easy.
I do have one, one thing more for Brad and anybody else. Years ago, we talked about Civic Plus and how we like their website so much. Going to maybe the ultimate hand. Did they hit a whole table? Max changes in that stuff. They do rely on that end, but. Some of these other, kind of website was not so redundant, a lot easier to use, that long caliber function.
We currently have like the basic package and then there's like an intermediate and then like a ultimate or something. So I think we're considering the ultimate.
If it was going to be like thirteen thousand, you could do it, but.
But my question was, was it like, what's the difference between the intermediate and the ultimate? If there's any difference.
It's totally blind. I know nothing.
Well, I'm just saying. That's just the concept.
I know nothing.
There's a lot of layout and the way you're going to use it, the different versions to be used.
What's next on the agendas?
Second session?
Their A B compliance.
Or at least not right into it.
There's various states, but if you're, you know, better than I would.
Let's do like this, just a sketchy look to them. So we can take a recess at this time? Let's do like this, just a sketchy look, so we can take a recess at this time? We want five minutes, ten minutes?
It's a long walk, but probably just ten, seven, seven, something like that.
We'll be back at, uh, ten fifty-five.
recesses.
Motion to approve, unless you got changes.
You wanna do two separate motions or one motion? We got two sets.
Uh, you can approve them both in the same motion, just say, you know, the date.
I got you.
I have one quick question. On the August fifth?
Mm-hmm.
If you go to the back to payroll, where we paid KBS invoice out of the law enforcement fund, is that one of those things that came from PBC and then comes over us?
Yes.
Should that be not under payroll, but maybe under something else?
It's just under bills. Or no bills or...
PBC bills, they're the little bolt one.
Yeah, I mean, it says payroll. It's a... Send it line there, yeah.
We just wanna bump it up then to where it says approval of minutes and bills?
Yeah.
Sure.
So, do you have the official copy?
No, you do.
Um... So, it's the August fifth?
Yeah.
Okay, so that was the fifth.
That was it.
Okay.
So...
Sold.
Excuse me.
There you are. Waiting for me? Yep. Sorry. Dollar wait, no to die.
Indian food.
Hey, and I got a bone to pick with you. That's a pretty nice pen you got over there.
You can wash it.
No, you can use it. I got another one.
I don't... I wouldn't wanna pick. Do you have a pen?
I don't.
Too far.
Thank you. See how nice a guy I am?
I'm trapped in it. I'm gonna walk away with it.
Uh-huh. No worries. We've got your own video evidence now.
Yeah, that's true. And then tent, he said it.
I hate to do that.
Yeah. Before you print that out, could we change the... Before you print that out, could we change the...
Are there vouchers assigned?
Oh.
Thank you. Here, Schwellen. Sold.
Excuse me.
There you are. Waiting for me? Yep. Sorry. Dollar wait, no to die.
Indian food.
Hey, and I got a bone to pick with you. That's a pretty nice pen you got over there.
You can wash it.
No, you can use it. I got another one.
I don't... I wouldn't wanna pick. Do you have a pen?
I don't.
Too far.
Thank you. See how nice a guy I am?
I'm trapped in it. I'm gonna walk away with it.
Uh-huh. No worries. We've got your own video evidence now.
Yeah, that's true. And then tent, he said it.
I hate to do that.
Yeah. Before you print that out, could we change the... I just couldn't resist.
Are there vouchers assigned?
Oh. Oh.
Thank you. Here, Schwellen. Gee, we got all the extensions.
Yeah. Heather, did you make it through to twenty-six? Oh, you're still... All right.
Yeah, I... I'm still on twenty-six. I have one correction on twenty-six.
Okay. Printer sounds like it's all right over there, doesn't it?
Oh, wow. Okay. What'd you have, Hunter?
Um, on... Are you on the twenty-sixth one?
Sure.
Uh, under new business, second page, go down to clerk. And then we're talking about the payroll action form. That was also two to one.
Yeah.
That's... The rest of them are correct on there, but...
Oh.
So, that's the only thing I see on the twenty-sixth page. Oh, that came out of my drawer. Yeah, so I think this... The rest of those are correct, but on... I think this was yours, and I think maybe that was on Tempest. I don't know who that was on. Do you know who that was on?
Can you get it signed? You don't want it signed.
Okay, Josh. All right, well, I would, uh...
She's about to have the other...
She's gonna...
Correct it.
Yeah. She's fixing the twenty-sixth one.
It's... Okay. I move that we approve the minutes from August fifth and August twenty-six as amended.
I'll second that motion. Motion's been made in second. Is all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed?
Okay, carries. So, that's the press... We can sign that one, right?
Yes.
Okay. This is the fifth.
Oh, I didn't sign it. You told me you didn't sign it.
Well, you don't have to.
I didn't know. If you were just signing off on it.
Oh, dude, sorry.
There's that.
Jeepers, mister.
I try to answer questions as they come to me.
Yeah, you will.
I get in trouble if I try it.
Uh-oh. Picked the right line.
Oh.
I've done that a couple of times. Never comes back, so just accept it.
And she's printing the twenty-sixth.
All right. Let's go ahead. If you'd like to move to approve the twenty-sixth ones.
Yeah, well, I think she's printing it.
We did that. We did that.
We did them both.
We did.
He did them both, but she's gonna print it so we can sign it.
Good. We're good then. Good there.
Efficiency, Mr. Chair.
Ass with the leather. So, let's do the... First, I move we enter into an executive session under attorney-client privilege for correspondence and legal advice for five minutes with all three commissioners and Josh and I present.
We can do ten and add a second topic.
We can do that. I will bend my motion to ten minutes with second topic being... Very good. So, moved. Then I have a second.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Is all of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Motion carries.
So, it's, uh...
That puts us back at, uh, oh, fifteen. That put us back at, uh, 15.
And it was actually at the B S I, one of those two officials.
I hear you.
Okay. Now we have. Clerk Michelle Morris. You sure we need fifteen minutes? We probably do, don't we? Okay, on move, we enter into an executive session for fifteen minutes under. You sure we want non-electors personnel? This should be attorney-client again. Attorney-client contractual advice. For fifteen minutes with all three members, Michelle Morris and Josh and I.
Second?
Motion's been made second at all as a favor.
Aye.
Aye. Pose.
Motion carries. We will return back at eleven thirty-three. Call thirty-three. Is that right?
It's close.
You're the official timekeeper, ma'am.
I got it. I'm all over it.
She's all over it.
It's about twenty-three to eleven-thirty-three. You should time it wisely.
You're right. I'll be right there.
One minute.
That was the best knock. It was. It was a good knock, wasn't it?
It was.
One minute. You did good.
That was the best knock.
It was. It was a good knock, wasn't it?
It was.
It wasn't the dreaded trailer hitched issue.
No. No action taken, executive session. Onto the bills. Did anybody see anything in the bills? I'm gonna take off.
I'm getting ready to, so.
All right, you get everything stamped. Josh?
Um, I have signed the five batches. There are a few recommended changes to.
How they're billed on or whatever.
Cateters. But I just did my taxes, so. End of keeping up.
Okay, so you were telling me something earlier. So batch one vouchers are here out of the book.
Right.
Have a good week, Josh.
I will do my best. How'd you all share? Take takes, buddy.
You always wanted to do it.
I did. In fact, I wanted this one so bad, I paid three dollars for it. I don't know what it is about them. They don't last long.
Mm-hmm. I don't wanna spoil myself. Find our things in life. King of dainties.
They're gonna go back. I don't need anymore.
Well, who's that? Is that their printer vendor then? For district court?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
So everybody's got their own, huh?
That's, yep. Something we love that's over here. Thank you just like to just go through it. Sweep and motion.
Yeah.
Put everybody who's under one, man, it just don't work that way.
Some of that.
Probably some stuff for their. What are they doing? Hmm, could that show? Hmm. Quit messing up. I've got security clearance. Almost everything is a state. It is scary.
Scary.
The federal background check was something.
Was it?
Did they call you guys?
Uh-uh.
I think I had you, maybe I just had David down.
He didn't say anything.
They called almost everybody on the, cause I had the, I had this, oh no, I bet that's why. I know David was on the list. Cause it wanted me to put like three to five people that I knew in my life that I'd known for many, so many years. So I had to put those in there. I know they called Chief Baker. He was like, uh, I guess I know Les Holman.
What did do now, yeah?
And I said.
Can't say that.
Federal people.
Yeah.
See that crap?
They don't joke around.
Right. They will write that stuff down. I will be relooking.
Are you done with that call?
Uh, well, we go back on Wednesday. Uh, for punch, well, we have tomorrow. We gotta do a punch and walk through, and I don't know. I'm a little nervous because.
The invoice.
The guy called the PNC.
Which batch do they go to? The ones in here.
You wanted what?
He wasn't going to accept.
But when they're five, last batch.
So four and five are here.
I never had that happen. It's a little.
Is this?
Yeah.
And five is just separate?
Yeah, those are.
And these are all just.
Yeah.
Here.
I know it doesn't have any more than nine.
They're not in book.
What's Vestas? Why is that so familiar?
Uh, there are, uh. Vestas.
Don't they do all the rugs and stuff?
Yeah, there are rug people.
Okay.
They're like towels.
Yeah.
Things like at the Roden Bridge.
I got you.
They do a lot of stuff. Cause sometimes the bills would come through and they're identical and I'm like, I think we're playing things duplicate. Well, it's on a monthly reoccurring, they provide.
I got you. Dirty shop towel fee. Yeah.
Dirty shop towel fee.
Yeah.
Uh, are there multiple signature pages?
So for a duplicate, they're on Sundays. That is not what you get.
Yeah.
Cause there's a lot of work to do over there and it's very tricky.
Well.
To get in and out.
Right. They are, they do the project as it's funded. So I know that we just finished that whole bunch of stuff and they were going back after going funding. But I don't know where they're sitting.
I've got batch one and four.
Yes, there's five batches. Batch four is in this book and then the other four batches are paper clipped together with all like the bills and stuff. So I'm just trying to keep them separate.
You want them right now?
Could I see some?
You can have them. This is, these are the copies we gotta sign.
That's fine, I just want to look through them. I haven't seen them. I'll give them back.
Hmm.
You want them right now?
Could I see some?
You can have them. This is, these are the copies we gotta sign.
That's fine, I just want to look through them. I haven't seen them. I'll give them back.
Hmm.
Oh, consulting. Keychain stuff. Rut row.
Don't forget no mix.
There's no paperclip on that chunk.
Yeah, it wasn't. Oh, here we go.
There's paperclips here. There's. Sorry.
So, um. What was her name? She went across the street.
No, they're not listed.
No, what's her name? Crazy.
Yeah. Anyway, yeah, I walked her through those. Hopefully she, it's gonna be a lot.
There was some, I'm sure there's been there before and stuff. I guess there needs to be one again.
Yeah?
I don't know. It's from the forties up here.
Uh-oh.
She was a little short for a while.
Yeah.
I didn't recognize her name. Cause if you, that's a good question. Oh, that's a lot of, oh, that's very nice or something. She goes, thanks. She goes, you want to know your work name? And I just laughed, my mind went, you never know.
Never know.
So anyway, it's just a book. I actually know her. Yes, she does. Yes. I was like, what is it? She goes, yeah, or crazy soul, so? She was a little short. I go, oh my god.
Yeah.
Yes. Oh, God, how bad.
Yeah, she, I think, I don't know. She's kind of a, a high-end collector of sorts.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, she's not stupid. I mean, she just kinda did some.
Yeah, she'll, uh.
If the nurse or the refrigerator, I guess she, she works over.
One minute.
One minute.
That was really good.
That was the best knock.
It was, it was a good knock, wasn't it?
It was.
It wasn't the driven trailer hitched to the show.
No action taken, effective search. Onto the bills. Anybody see anything in the bills? I'm gonna take off. I'm getting ready to, so. Alright, you get everything stamped? Josh?
I have signed the five batches. There are a few recommended Janus to...
How they're billed on or whatever?
Catebours. But I just did my taxes, so. End of bookkeeping.
Okay, so you were telling me something earlier. So batch one vouchers are here on the book.
Have a good week, Josh.
I will do events.
Oh, Josh, hey, thanks, buddy.
You always wanted them, Dan.
I did. In fact, I wanted this one so bad, I paid three dollars for it. I don't know what it is about them, they don't last all that long.
I don't want to spoil myself. Finer things in life, kings and dainties. Well, who's that? Is that their printer vendor then? For District Court?
Oh, yeah.
Everybody's got their own.
That's, look. Something we looked at every year. Think you'd just like to just go through it. Sweep and motion.
Yeah.
But everybody's under one, it just don't work that way.
Some of that.
I'll use this stuff for there. Hmm, put that through.
Quit messing up.
I've got security clerks installed, everything is a state. It is scary. That federal background check was something.
Was it?
Did they call you guys? I think I had you, maybe I just had David down. They called almost everybody on them, because I had the, I had this, oh, no, I bet that's why. I know David was on the list. Because it wanted me to put like three to five people that I knew in my life that I'd known for so many years. So I had to put those in there. I know they called Chief Baker. He was like, uh, I guess I know Les Holman.
What'd he do now? Can't say that.
Federal people.
Yeah.
See that crap.
They don't joke around.
Right, they will wipe that stuff out, and I will be removed.
Are you done with that, Tom?
Uh, well, we go back on Wednesday. For Punch, well, we have tomorrow. We gotta do a Punch and Walk there, and I don't know, I'm a little nervous because... I think I called the PMS.
Which batch do they go to? The ones in here?
He wasn't going to accept. I don't know.
So four and five are here.
I've never had that happen.
Is this? And five is just separate? And these are all just here?
Yeah, I know it doesn't have any money.
They're not in the book.
What's vestas? Why is that so familiar?
There are, uh... Vestas.
Don't they do all the rugs and stuff?
Yeah, there are rug people.
Okay.
Things like at the road and bridge.
I got you.
Because sometimes the bills would come through and they're identical, and I'm like, I think we're playing things duplicate. Well, it's on a monthly reoccurring, they provide...
Dirty shop towel fee.
Are there multiple signature pages?
So, well, we get them there on Sundays.
Yeah.
Because there's a lot of work to do over there, and it's very tricky.
Well...
To get in and out.
Right. They are, they do the project as it's funded. So I know that we just finished up a whole bunch of stuff, and they were going back after more funding. But I don't know where they're sitting.
I've got batch one and four.
Yes, there's five batches. Batch four is in this book, and then the other four batches are paper clipped together with all like the bills and stuff. Just trying to keep them separate.
You want them right now?
Could I see some?
You can have them, this is, these are the copies we gotta sign.
That's fine, I just want to look through them. I haven't seen them. I'll give them back.
Big one.
Uh, consulting. Keychain stuff. Rut row.
Don't be kidding me.
There's no paper clip on that chunk.
Yeah, there was. Oh, here we go.
There's paper clips here.
Bet you might make sure I'm in there too, could you?
So, um... She has a stupid old man going across the street.
No, they're not listening.
You know, what's her name? Crazy.
Yeah. Anyway, yeah, I walked her through those, hopefully she, it's gonna be a lot.
There was some, sure there was in there before and stuff, I guess there ain't no getting it yet.
Really?
I don't know. Some crazy stuff is in there. She was a little short for a while.
Yeah.
I didn't recognize her name. Because if you, if you get to the desk, oh, that's real, I'm, oh, that's very nice or something, she goes, thanks, you go to my number, what's your name though? And I just laughed, I was like, you never know.
Never know.
So anyway, it's just women, that's how she knows you. Yeah, she does.
Yeah.
She says, yes. I go, what is it? She goes, you know, crazy soul, so, she was a little short. I go, oh my God.
Yeah.
Yes.
I think, I don't know, she's kind of a, a high intellectur of sorts.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, she's not stupid. But she just kind of did some, a little bit. If the nurse or the rep later, what is she? She works everywhere, I'm, but it... There's a lot of her stuff. She just kind of a high end.
Right. Exciting, and then you got the coffee shop, you got the ice cream. Misty, that's it. And then you got the ice cream shop. With Heather on the side by there sometimes, it's really good.
I will, I'm not big on ice cream, but...
What? What?
Ice cream, juice, cereal.
Heather, when you get to be my age, you eat a lot more ice cream.
I'm never gonna be your age.
She's gotta weigh her to go.
I understand.
She stopped having birthdays until twenty-five.
Last year.
Yeah. Very compliment.
Take every change you can to dig yourself out of the hole. I hope I got those all put back in the right order once.
Well, I think you did, but Michelle will let you know if you didn't.
Oh, yeah, I probably...
There's what?
Stickies.
Yes.
Oh, excuse me, we got a gas leak in here or something.
No, you don't, man. Highly possible. And if the owner hasn't checked properly, you may not know. Thankfully, it's Kansas Gas, that's what I like to do for you.
Like when you look at your calendar on your phone, it says no events today, that's a lie.
Mm-hmm. I just missed putting something in there.
Yeah, it's a lie.
On this one, there was just some, uh, Josh kind of circles stuff and then makes notes for Michelle to look at, on whether it's contractual or...
Right, which fund it ought to be out of or whatever.
Determine the consistency on how something's recorded.
Okay, so I'll need a motion to approve paying the bills in the total amount of one hundred fifty-seven thousand, one hundred fifty-seven dollars and sixteen cents.
That's the total of all five batches?
Total of all five batches, according to this here fancy piece of paper Michelle made for me.
And you moved, or?
I moved, yes, sir.
Well, I'll second.
Alright.
I'm sorry.
Oh, Heather can second.
No, you got it, you got it.
Motion's been made and seconded by Heather, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Whoa, did you sign?
When you're done.
I didn't sign any of them.
Just, we'll use that.
I foolishly just looked at them.
Very rare, we don't approve paying the bills and so fast.
I'm not used to looking at the official papers.
Anything else, anything, anything, anybody, anybody? Going once? Going twice? Anybody? Need a motion to adjourn?
It's a move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. You all have a lovely week. A really lovely one. It's a short week.